Calling the Dune City Council, regular session of Wednesday, November 16th, 2022, to order at 6:00 AM. Rule call?
Mayor Meyer.
President.
Council President Snow.
Here.
Counselor Stinson.
Here.
Counselor Hammond.
Here.
Counselor Orr.
Here.
Counselor Wells.
That would be Lang Duck Council.
Oh, no.
And Counselor Mellon is absent and unexcused.
You know, we give people like that detentions over where I work.
Yeah.
So unexcused absences just don't count.
Stand for the pleasure of ladies.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Thank you all. And we still have the pleasure of ladies.
Yes.
Need a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Need a motion to approve the consent of them?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Passes unanimously. Announcements and correspondence.
Parkway Drive is still closed. No, I take that back. I think they opened it today.
I drove through it today.
Did you? I'm pretty sure it's open. There's still some last minute touches, but it'll stay open now. What they have left to do won't affect road closure at all. And the rest of it is something that I'll be speaking to the council about, so. That's all.
Okay. Any citizen input on items not discussed in public hearing? Nothing look like it.
Oh.
Hold of business, discussion of changes to short-term rental code.
I have received written recommendations from a member in our audience. And they're mostly editing, putting things in proper alphabetical order, you know, sort of things like that. And some corrections and some questions about some provisions. So I don't know how you want to handle it, if you want to proceed forward and everybody make their comments.
Any comments to be made on the short-term rent code?
Chemical by page beginning from what we did last time, that helps me instead of bouncing around.
All right.
If you don't mind, if nobody minds.
Yeah.
So start with page one.
The third whereas should read, whereas the Dune City Council desires.
Other comments on page one?
There, did you make that one too? With the chapter 123 shall be amended to read?
No, I didn't make that.
Okay, that was me. All right.
Never mind, that was all on page one.
It was very nice of you to do this and put this some of that in an easier plan.
I like the eye test you gave us this time, no cheating.
No.
I'm sorry, that was the computer and it took me a long time. It still does that. I don't know why. I've got to font correctly.
I brought my other one because I can read it.
All those are printed, it's probably the same here.
But when I print it off in its final form, it will be beautiful like that.
So what if it's small print? We don't have as much to debate.
Right.
Because I can't see it. I'll have to look through my other one.
Any more comments on page one? Page two comments on page two?
Exhibit C.
Any comment on page thirty or exhibit A?
So did these, these were added in the red? Was that what they were? They were added?
Right.
Or based on our public hearing?
Yes, and the comments that I had heard.
Okay. So will this require a public hearing if we approve this or in the first reading or what?
That will be up to you guys to decide. It's not a land use code, so it's not mandated to have a public hearing. But it being a new ordinance, you do have to have a public hearing for that, so. I was wrong. It is mandated. You'll have to have one, yes.
So in here, the only one that I noticed at the bottom I had a question about is that we're changing it now, it's within 15 minutes? Was it 30 minutes or what? Did we not have a time with how close they need to be?
We had a time in there.
It was 30 minutes?
Yes.
And we want to make it sooner?
Right.
Okay.
I will point out that one of the recommendations that Rapunzel made, which is, it is true. All of our definitions are usually done in alphabetical order, so these will be put into alphabetical order.
Well, I don't know why we, 15 minutes seems, I mean, I know we have these response times, but 30 minutes seem reasonable. I mean, I don't understand. I don't know, I don't remember them talking about how soon. I thought it was like close within hours and things instead of 15 minutes. That's the only thing I have to say. I think it's an arbitrary number. It's an awful small number. I mean, you'd think that they want somebody to live next door, I guess, because by the time I get my shoes and socks on and walk over, it'd be 15 minutes.
A lot of places in Oregon have people have to be on site to be a rental like that. And we're not asking them to do that here in Dune City, so they're getting kind of a break.
Well, I can understand like motels, hotels, night desk people and things like that. If this is a rental house or something like that, I...
You know, I haven't seen the problem and actually, one of the gentlemen was in here. I've been to their house and it was quarter after 12:00 and they bent up, you know, and 15 minutes with what was going on there by the time I got there, it was a big deal.
We also...
I just, I think if we make it 15 minutes and you see that people are serious and that we're serious about this and, you know, not half hour, hour, whatever you can get there. If there's a problem that comes to, comes up, I think it needs to be taken care of. And it's kind of like keeping tight reins on it right from the get-go.
To me, it just tells people we want them to respond immediately. And I'm not going to ding anybody if they're 20 minutes or something like that.
No.
It just...
It gives them some starting point.
We want you to respond immediately to something that happens.
Something's going on on your properties and you need to take care of.
All right.
By the way, on page three, three, yeah. Under authorized agent, I don't know if that was in the last version, but we have already run into a problem with this.
Really? I'm sorry.
Because they named an authorized agent and Lonnie didn't catch it. And now we can't even contact them and they park their vehicles all over hill and gone, blocking driveways and everything, and I have no one.
You just tell a wrecking company, call a wrecking company and let them figure it out. And they're blocking cars and roads and...
I know.
And...
Driveways.
For emergency vehicles or whatever, tow some of them.
And bike paths and walking paths.
Yeah.
So in regards that, if you don't have a valid authorized agent, is that a reason to revoke the license?
Yes, that is a reason to revoke the license, which I tried to do, but now the address that I have for the owner is not valid.
Oh, boy.
So can you do a listing on the property?
Many actors. That's the only choice I have left.
Are there, are there, I would assume that there are, I mean, you've probably searched public records for the owner and so that's going to be hard to track down.
Well, there are about five different owners, so I have some other addresses.
You know, been through this and what, you call Sam, oh, you better call David, you better call Betty, you know, it vicious.
And those are the type of people I don't believe should have rental.
They should.
Because there are a lot of responsible rental owners.
There are.
And they're giving us a bad name.
That's right.
And the others that are good owners.
And I don't think that that's a thing to do because we have so many nice people that actually do the right thing for the community and...
It's just so lucrative, this Airbnb business, that these people are buying up these family homes and renting them out. And that's, I'm changing some of them. That's my name, that.
We do have ways to get...
Same way we're developing ways.
Yeah. I was just asking for clarification, so.
Jamie, this particular situation, how long has that been going on that you've been trying to make a contact?
It's been about two months now. Because it takes time for the man to go and then be returned. Because none of them live in here, not around here.
Okay.
Yeah.
So do we need to put something within this stating that if you change your address, you have so many days to notify?
It's in there.
And ramifications for not notification?
Yeah.
How do people find out how to rent a rental?
Keep them updated.
Well, we need to have it in this.
He is the person who is the one who made the application. And so he is the one that we're supposed to be able to contact. And none of the information he gave us to, gave to us is down.
We got to work with a permit on that thing.
The permit was never approved.
Oh, permit on it.
That permit was never granted. It was not approved because he can't show that the septic is up to date. He can't show anything.
Is it currently running as a vacation short term?
Yes, it is actively advertised. It is actively rented.
Well...
What about the, in the advertisement, there must be some contact information, is that?
I haven't tried that yet.
I bet that didn't work.
Yeah, might.
Pretend like you got money in your pocket and you want to rent a rental.
It sounds like leads and fines and...
Yeah, sure does.
You need to get earned on this one.
Right, and how do you find somebody you can't find?
Yeah.
But I can post. And I can have vehicles tow. Hate to do that to the people who rented the place, but...
But it would only put more pressure on the authorized agent for not standing their ground and doing what they're supposed to be doing.
What the gentleman did on his application, his name is next door neighbor, and so we caught the next door neighbor to the house. And so we contacted him. No, I'm not the contact for that house. I don't know where he got that idea.
He was convenient.
Yeah, it's the only name I knew.
Is he willing to help by getting in contact with that person? Otherwise, we...
He doesn't know how to get in contact with him. Any better than what I've got. But yeah, it's, it's, it's bad.
Yeah.
And I don't know, they are an LLC, so there may be a way that I can do something through the Secretary of State's office, but I'm not sure.
I was just saying, the house next to me, so, and it became an Airbnb, bought from some folks from there, and I bet you don't know which house that is.
Next door to yours?
Yeah, along the way into the Huckleberry.
No.
Yeah.
I am not aware.
That's the problem.
But then I don't do that. That's Lonnie's job, so.
Can you go through the title company of the property?
Well, we're solving a problem. We're kind of getting this wording wrong.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm sorry, I mean, I'm sure you can...
Just keep that in mind as you're going through this.
Yeah. So what can we do to make it easier for you?
Right. Make it work.
Moving right on.
One of the questions that I was asked about on page five, are we on to page five?
Four.
On four?
On four.
Oh, we're still on four? Okay.
No, we're on three. We just turned.
I know, I'm lost.
I've been on four.
I'm on five.
What's our problem?
So on four, two, three?
Well, again, on four, it's the alphabetical stuff.
Okay. Now on five?
The question that was raised with regard to section 123.004, paragraph C. Does Dune City have this number, meaning total residential properties in Dune City according to the most recent Census Bureau information? I have it written down somewhere.
You gave us 860 last time, at the last meeting.
How much?
Eight hundred and sixty.
Yeah, and that may be where, what I looked up, so that may have come in. I don't recall.
It was different than the time before because you said you looked it up and said eighty-sixty was the...
Well, yeah, but the time before I guessed based on, yeah, but...
We had eight hundred and sixty, we had thirty-two permitted. It was just under four percent.
If we, Jamie, if we set this at a number that exceeds the number that already exists, I don't mean the thirty-two, but there's obviously more out there, what is, do we, in other words, do we have to set this at a number higher than what's already there or already permitted?
What the attorney suggested is that higher than what you have already permitted.
Yeah, okay. So we could go with, say, I mean, we could do a number or we could do a percentage?
Yeah.
I guess either way, okay.
Well, it's probably better to do a percentage if we're a growing place or shrinking place.
And the other recommendation from the attorney was that you would base that on a study. And we do have a study that shows that five percent causes, is the lowest that causes an impact. That's where you start seeing any impact, is at five percent.
Yeah.
Good, bad, indifferent, doesn't matter.
So that would put us at one forty-three?
Forty-three is five percent.
Forty-three, right.
But do we want to...
If you give it a five, then it'd be margin in there.
Yeah, I was thinking maybe fifty.
I don't think we should give anyone...
Oh, sure.
We should stop anywhere from being an entrepreneur. They want to, because most of them are very decent and run their things, their property properly. There's only a few bad actors, so I have a problem with if we get to a point and someone wants to and we tell them they can't. How can we stop people from, the whole country is based on entrepreneurship.
First thing you'd ask them is their property residential or commercial?
Well, this also...
Well, I'm not going there with that. I'm just talking a general aspect.
So I worry about the percentages too. I also have another observation here is that some of these properties have shared driveways. And that's a limiting factor and some of these are permitted, might not even do permits in the future because the neighbors won't want to share their driveway.
Yeah.
So I mean, it's kind of cabal with...
The biggest problem in Dune City is the shared driveway. The one down Cloud Nine, that's a shared driveway.
And I see what you're saying, but for the factors, we have to have a cap on this for, to reduce the impact. We, you know, not putting a cap on it and allowing these, oh, well, they're good, they're good, they're good. We can do that, but it's not going to be beneficial to our city. It's not going to be beneficial to Dune City. We're just going to further, who's to say is he's better than this one or better than you? We don't know these when these permits are put into play.
I understand that, but we're still getting fees from these people, so.
So it might have to be a waitlist at that point.
Well, that's what I'm thinking.
And when someone's permit is revoked, then the next one on the waitlist steps in.
I...
I'm just, I'm not sure.
Even a waitlist or one of those things, it almost becomes monopoly. I mean, you have that with...
What are you saying then? As long as somebody has a home here and they get a house, that Dune City shouldn't have a number or percentage that's finite on that? Just, okay, one more's not going to hurt.
I'm not saying that at all. I'm trying to understand the ramifications of it. I don't feel good about it. I don't feel bad about it. It just seems there's a lot of...
Yeah, I just, there's things that I've been thinking about and there's...
One of the unintended consequences sort of thing.
I've been paying attention to this and up and down the coast, and I'm telling you, further north you go, the bigger problem it is. And they're getting onto it late. That's what I've said months ago, it's nice to get out in front of this. And I think we are, and I think we are, but I really believe we have that, whatever you want the number to be, it's fine, but I think there needs to be a number and then a waiting list.
Change it.
Wait for an opening to come up and you're welcome to do it, but you've got to have some...
If we can live within that percentage and it isn't causing problems, maybe bump it up, but...
You've got to maintain visibility for people in Dune City first.
One of the parts of this that concerns me is, and I'm all for a cap, but not everybody is going to say, oh, well, you've told me not to, so I won't. So there's going to be the problem of trying to enforce it. And yes, you can put a lien on the property or something like that, but that doesn't necessarily, somebody might say, well, I'm not going to sell this property in the next 20 years, so that doesn't bother me. I don't know what we do to enforce it, but what you could end up with is you drop somebody off the rolls and add somebody else, but then that person doesn't cease and desist. So then how do you, so then it continues to grow because not everybody's going to follow the rules?
You're going to have that, but I still think you've got to have...
Oh, I agree with you.
I don't know.
I'm just wondering if, what we do.
I mean, we actually, as a city, own a piece of property over here. I mean, for all intents and purposes, we could solve some problems for Westlake area if we revoked that property.
If we what?
If we...
Repot, possess the property.
Oh, I see.
We closed them that long, and, I mean, that lien and took that property back, but then that's going to put like five people homeless, if not more, I'm not sure. So I've been reluctant to go in that direction and have been trying to find other ways to handle it. The bottom line is, I really don't know.
Yeah.
I don't know what you do unless you finally just take them to court, as in federal, I mean, not federal court, but district court, state court, which is a possibility.
Which is a possible.
It gets quite expensive and hopefully you get...
Well, I don't see anything wrong with adding forty-three and five percent right now, and if that is the right number, we'll change it.
Well, I'll make that...
If we're living with that, I mean...
I'll make that as a motion and let's see where it goes. So I move that we approve the, let's see, how to word this, that the number of permits for short-term rentals will not exceed five percent of the total residential properties in Dune City.
Second, go. Any further discussion? Call those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Steve.
Yeah, Steve. I just, I'm just not ready. I was just, given everything like that.
Well, I would probably be more than willing to vote on the whole thing at the end and say, if it's five percent, too, I mean, that's, I mean, but I want to go through the whole thing before we...
All right, well, let's move on.
Correct.
So we'll need a motion at the end to approve the whole thing and...
Got it.
All right, so the next page. Any concerns?
Again, this is the one where I remember why, if, this is where we also changed the thirty to the fifteen minutes. I just wanted to point that out as well.
Contact, contact.
One of the questions that was raised in paragraph two, midway down the paragraph, what constitutes overcrowding?
I think it'd be by capacity of the septic system.
The septic or the restrictions? Because we have restrictions.
Parking availability, how much available parking there is in the septic would be for Germany.
I thought we had a limitation of how many could be in my bedroom.
We do.
I thought that would be the...
That's a limiting factor.
Why don't we refer to that section there? The overcrowding, or define overcrowding as being greater than the number allowable, pursuant to section, whatever it is that it's in.
Yeah, makes sense. So, and then the other thing on this part is item four, and this is the shared driveway thing. Which seemed, I remember coming up at the, at the town hall meeting and it seemed like a reasonable thing because of the compliance here.
I thought so too. I had that marked that I'm, if the other, since it is used for several people, if the other people don't agree with it, I don't think they should be allowed to do it because that they have to pay for part of that driveway. If it's all being used over and over by these people, then that's not fair to the other homeowners.
And also, there's an implication there too, because we don't have many city streets, a lot of these, there's a lot of shared driveways here, so that might be a limiting factor for the percentages too in the future.
Okay. Also, the next paragraph, the emergency contact. A suggestion that in the last sentence, an emergency or absence contacted, in an emergency or absence, contact information for a second qualified person must be provided rather than may be provided.
Yeah.
So you're saying changing the may to must?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, because it's not written, so.
All right. Next page.
Now, but there's another question on this one. And the question is, is Lang County doing this designation? Yes, it is on their permit as one of the permits that they do if it is a less than 1,000 gallon tank. According to the Lang County Sanitarium now in my conversations with him, he said that a 1,000 gallon tank should be able to handle up to 10 people without a problem.
Wow.
But he said if you get over 10, then yes, you're definitely putting it at risk. And there is a way to have an evaluation done to make that determination. Of course, he also made this comment that if they're, if they've got 10 people spending the night in the house, they're a motel and that's commercial. And that's his personal opinion, is that all of these should be commercial property.
Yeah, it's a commercial thing.
But yes, they do have a way that they do that, and those were the recommendations that I got from the Lang County Sanitarium.
Okay. Next page.
Wait a minute. Oh, okay, I see what you're saying there. On the next one. Okay, yeah. The permit duration, if it were June 30th, it would be tied to the fiscal year rather than July 30th. Doesn't give you much time to work with it, but it would be, well...
Keeping together.
You want that June 30th then?
Yes. I was looking at that and wondering... I was looking at that and wondering why.
Oh, it's 'cause Jamie didn't have a minute on straight that day.
And the next page is... About complaints and response to complaints.
There should be a, I missed a local representative. I went through and tried to change every local representative to emergency contact, so the language would be specific, so that local representative should be emergency contact.
Yeah. That works for you. Next page. I'm looking at the river, but I don't know if that's the bottom. Permit application. Submit falsified information to the city.
Does, just for clarification, does the situation that you were just describing, do any fall under this falsified information, or is it just questionable at this point?
I don't know where you are, but yes, it's, I haven't confirmed anything because there are so many owners on the property, I mean, of the property. It may be that the address I have for him is one of the other owners, and therefore the letter was returned because they didn't have his name, but they have somebody else's name.
I was at the bottom of ten, just so you know.
We was there, yeah, we were on that.
Are we on nine?
We're just three, ten.
Well, what do you know?
Somebody ready to read the letter? Page two, twelve? Twelve?
Just three pages to eleven.
There is a suggestion for clarification that the city authority makes references onto all these other chapters, that it might be helpful if I put the title of the chapter in there. Like thirty-six is code enforcement or something like that.
So are you, if I understand what you're saying, are you, this one twenty-three dot zero one six that's in red that you added, it should be code enforcement, citizen administrator? Is that what you're saying?
No, what I'm saying is that chapter thirty-six is our code enforcement code. And it, and what they're suggesting is that it say, chap, complaints under chapter thirty-six, ninety-one, one thirty, and one forty-one of the code. Oh, I guess it says all of them.
Okay, now we're ready for four?
So I would enforce under one thirty-six, but there are ways, there are other violations that could occur that aren't specifically one twenty-three.
So Jamie, I wasn't clear, are you adding something?
No.
Okay.
Well, what I may add is just the title of the section. Like, chapter thirty-six is code enforcement, ninety-one is, now we are checking Jamie's brain.
Nuisance.
Is what?
Nuisance.
Nuisances?
Yeah.
Nuisances, one thirty? It was something. I'll look it up. And one forty-one. I went through and decided which ones would apply.
Okay. Page twelve? Situations? Fifteen? Now, do we have a motion to approve ordinance number?
No, that's not...
Yeah.
Not yet?
No, you can do your first reading, but I haven't scheduled it for, I am not scheduled it.
So we, we can say that we can have a motion to concur with all this, then what we've done, right?
Well, I have something I need to clarify first. Is there someplace in there that says that the owner's responsible for things that occur on their property?
No, there isn't, I don't think.
I believe that that, that was stated at the town hall that we had, that they thought that the owner needed to be responsible for what occurred on the property. Is there a good place that we can put that in?
Yes, there is. It is in code in general, but we'll make it specific in here too.
So having gone through all this, does that count as a first reading? Or do you have an official first reading title?
Well, you can do the first reading now, although it probably should have been done before. But, but you could do it now, and then we'll do the second reading and consideration when you have a final clean copy.
Okay. Need a motion to have a first reading title only?
Uh, clarification first, if we may. What are we doing at this point about the percentage or lack of percentage?
You've already said it's gonna be five percent.
Yeah, you said five percent.
And so, we will...
I thought that didn't...
Yeah, no, it, it, that was a consensus, I thought.
Was it?
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
And if it comes up again?
A little bit far left.
Yeah. I was under the impression that...
I've never been called far left, I'm sorry.
All right, I'll, have a look.
Almost right then?
Since the first reading is not actually on the agenda, let's just wait.
Okay. I have a feeling that the shared driveway thing will change the percentages in the future.
Bottomed in that way.
Thank you, Representative.
I just know we have a lot of good rental owners and...
Yep.
Yeah.
We always have, we make regulations because of bad ones. And I always want to make sure that we don't hurt the good ones to try and take care of the bad ones. And that's a shame that we have to do that, but that's why rules are put in places to...
I don't think this ordinance even should attach anybody until they're bad.
Yeah.
They're not even gonna know this here. If you're a good, a good...
Shouldn't be affected by...
Business runner, you're not even gonna know this is there.
Oh, no, I understand that. I'm just saying, but there is, because now they have to do things. They have to have certain things to do at home.
There's growing rates with the city.
There are differences.
Yeah.
So all I'm trying to make sure is, I understand you're asking them to change. I wanna make sure that the changes are not something that will hurt them.
Absolutely.
And because, people shouldn't be hurt just because some people are bad.
Absolutely, I agree.
Moving around, election results.
I'd like to, as the election's official for the city, congratulate Duke Wells for having not won the election.
That was a little different. Stop the bull, little, you know, bright gears.
Stop doing your, your moment of drinking right there.
You and Stumpy were pretty close.
I'd probably voted for myself if I didn't want.
All I can say is four hundred and twenty-four votes is a lot of votes.
Yeah, it is, it is.
Yes, it is.
Considering the election four years ago, where there was only like a hundred and fifty people that voted, there was a lot more that voted this time, and I congratulate all the Duke City for getting out there and voting this time. That's wonderful. I'm glad that they finally did that, so...
Paying attention.
We've come a long ways, because when I first ran as a write-in, I won with twenty-four votes against an incumbent.
Yeah. Wow.
Yes, in the past, there have been people who served on the city council that had five votes.
Yeah.
Agreed.
Yeah.
So yes, I agree with you.
I mean, it was a good, good...
Really appreciate, appreciate the people of the city who showed up. And congratulations to Sheldon.
Yep.
Of his reelection. And congratulations to Councilor Snow, Councilor Stinson, and...
Rich.
Rich Olson, thank you. Rich Olson.
Yeah, he'd be a good cop, sorry.
Okay. I'd put sale of silk coustain also under new business, and I would like it to... Well, you tell me, we gotta go into executive session. Would you wanna discuss it now, or do you wanna go into executive session?
Let's do it after executive session.
Okay, so you're ready to go into executive session now?
Yeah.
I'm sorry if I didn't give you the speech thing.
Public hearing?
There is no public hearing.
Public hearing.
Executive session.
All business is done with. Okay, so we're gonna do executive session?
You'll adjourn this one?
Adjourned the regular meeting at?
Six forty?
Six forty. And...
We'll go into executive session. Press is allowed to a certain extent. With all the usual constraints, does that work? Don't let him trick you, okay?
All right, we're adjourned into executive session. Okay, Jamie, you ready?
I think so.
Do we need to turn on the?
No, I left it, so we don't hear what they were talking about while we were...
Oh, good.
I'm calling the regular session back to order at seven oh five. And new business. Ordinance number two sixty-seven, traffic code. And so, this, we need that, we'll make a motion to read by title only?
Oh, really?
Is that what we're supposed to do?
If you can, if you're ready. I just thought I'd try it only for discussion, but yes, if you would do it by title only, then you can have all the discussion you want.
So is there a motion to read by title only? I'm...
I'll second that.
Call those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Can we read it by title only, ordinance number two sixty-seven? An ordinance adding chapter seventy to title seven. Traffic code of the Dune City Code of Ordinances and Title Traffic Regulations, Establishing Powers of the City Council, City Administrator, Code Enforcement Officer, Establishing offenses and Civil Penalties There For and Other Matters Related There Too. Discussion?
Let's see, you, you made the motion for first reading by title only and Bob seconded it.
Yes.
Yes.
And no one... We, I did read the ordinance, and there was only one thing that I found, and I think...
Yes.
I did, I, I shouldn't say that because I'm thinking that just it was a word itself. And that was on page eleven. If there's anything else I see, eleven, page eleven, item D. And then I, I had a question to ask staff. What sort of problems do we, do we have problems with, what sort of problem are we solving by putting this ordinance in? Will we have lots of complaints, or...
We have received complaints, parking complaints particularly, especially around short-term rentals, but even in, even for full-time residents, and complaints about four-wheelers.
So I, I live probably a half a block from Darlands, and I get my four-wheeler, my U T V, and I drive over to Darlands and park in the parking lot, and I go eat, and then I get my U T V and I drive back. And of course, that's on a city street. There's no city streets there. What about people who do things like that? It's not like driving a four-wheeler down full speed or things of that sort. Does this make law?
I had them go by my house that were in one of the Airbnb things down the road from me yesterday. And if I'd have been in a position where I could have got to the road quick enough, I'd have went out there down, and they were going by my place way too fast. But I'll control speed on that myself. You know, of course, I'll run out there and slow them down.
So I'm thinking of changing my U T V because it's late to a golf cart.
Stealth.
Yeah, so, but I mean, what, because I know there's, there's a thing about electric bicycles, and I know there's, and wheelchairs and things of that sort. How, or, or we're gonna just do it on a complaint basis? So Lori Hammond's going over to Darlands and that, well, it's a county road there.
I don't think that that's what this is about at all.
Yeah.
I didn't quite understand the section, I'm trying to find it, about why some had to be on roads under twenty-five miles an hour and others could be on roads with any speed limits.
I, I think the idea is that if it's a slower vehicle, it's okay to go on the slower roads, but if it's not capable, if I have a vehicle that only goes twenty-five miles an hour and it's on a fast road, then it could be a hazard. I think that's the idea.
You know, you can't have any fast roads, you do say.
That might be, I don't know.
Well...
Well, Clear Lake isn't our road though.
No, but it's in city limits.
Okay, I got you. I understand. Well, I don't like to see sometimes, is that they, there are people around here that assume that the bike path and the walking path that we got a special grant building is a parking lot. Hello? Yeah, the other thing that I saw was having no U T Vs or anything like that on the hiking paths. As a volunteer for Oregon to question trails, you know, you'd ride horses to fix them, but I've also been known to use a four-wheeler to get to the places to clean trails and do trail work. And I don't know if there are any exclusions or things like that. I don't know if it would be a problem to have permissions and things of that sort, but there's all kinds of things that, there's exceptions that happen that, I, I just, I would prefer not to have this ordinance unless there were some really overriding reasons why we need it. That, that's mine. I'd like to hear you discuss them, because I'd like to, I'm settling out my mind.
Yeah. But this is in response to issues, I assume. This, this is in here because of issues.
Well, you weren't here at the last meeting when it came up.
Neither was I.
Well, we have parking issues, but this is a lot more detailed than I thought our parking issue was.
Throw it out.
And I would like a little less in it, because like I said, there's some things on here right in what Lori was saying. There's some things that, that says you can't use, and it's, that's one of the nice things about working, being in a rural area is being able to use ATVs and such, and, you know, golf carts and things like that, and...
The thing is, I'm not adverse to none. I mean, I can walk to Darlands and things like that, but it's not the point. Yeah, that's why I was trying to see what the scope, what the issue, what we're trying to fix.
I thought it was a parking issue, and that's why I thought this was a little much for parking issue, but I'm sure Jamie copied something that somebody had and...
Right, City of Lawrence. And there's provisions in here that I'm not sure. I replaced police department with code enforcement officer and replaced the court with the city council. And I don't know if that's legal or not. But a parking violation would be a citation.
Right.
And, and the citation requires that they appear and state their side of the story and... and state their side of the story in front of someone who can pass judgment. And you guys do that. That's what you do on all code enforcement stuff for the city. So in my mind, that was what I thought. And yes, you're right. I mean, all I did was copy the whole traffic, basically traffic code of the city of Florence. And there's some of the, I just typed it, I didn't understand it.
Well, I must admit I've never seen a, I, I personally have never seen a golf cart on the streets of the city of Florence, but I have seen them in green trees. I don't know if that's considered city street or not, so, I mean, it's things like...
Probably a private road.
Yeah.
The biggest increase I've seen with the business right on Florence is the e-bikes.
Right.
A lot.
There's a lot of e-bikes. And we have those in Dune City, we have quite a few of them.
Really?
Oh, yeah.
And if that's, you know, e-bikes or even mopeds and, and so, I don't know if they should be on trails.
Right, exactly. And that's something that we're going to have to...
Address sometimes.
At some time, yeah, but not right now.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I knew there was going to be stuff that would have to come out. Do we have any sidewalks or curbs? Huh? Do we have any sidewalks or curbs?
No.
Well, I think there might be one, you know, no, actually, we don't. It's not done yet.
Oh.
We had to cut that out because it was too expensive, yeah.
It's wide enough to drive down the side though. But it's the same, not, not just sort of curbs, but bike lanes and things of that sort.
The big problem is parking. Right. And if you want to cut it down to where all it is is parking, we can do that too.
My main issue is seventy point zero one seven storage on streets. Our car that I was just talking about.
Right. Well, I like that one ongoing complaint, yes.
So, but, did you, we, you got a complaint on Silco's, that you, that they towed the car away? Is that's a parking, the same service?
Yes, I called and had the, the truck towed away. Now I don't know what to do with it, but...
Yeah.
I'm going to make a decision on what to do.
So, but that's not really parking, it's, that's just, it's more of abandoned vehicle.
That was abandonment, yes.
Yes.
That was abandonment.
Well, just trying to put my head around it. Apologize to...
No.
Yeah, that's a totally, I mean, it's a, it's an issue, but it's a different issue.
And I don't have a problem if I have a neighbor that once in a while have, because we don't have, I have a shared driveway, you know, and sometimes I even take up extra space, it's a problem. I don't have a problem if it's once in a while, but if it's all the time, it's a big deal. Big difference, yeah. So we got to talk about it. So we've had a first reading, we want to have a Sunday adjourned next time?
Well, you give me some direction and I can come up with a revised version. Or you guys can all take it and come back with several different amendments.
That to me would be good.
I might read it a little more down.
Yeah.
Me too.
I agree.
That'll be my choice as well. Any objection? Okay, moving right along. Approval of water guarantee for the new furniture, water distribution system installation.
I am hoping that I put that in here.
You did. Just the one right behind...
This, yeah.
Where in the two sixty-seven. So I, I move that we accept the letter, move that we approve the, approve law guarantee for fur, for acres. I made the motion, who's going to second it? Now we can talk about it, right? Yeah. Any thoughts? I do have, I, I have a comment more than anything. I looked at that bill and that's about ten thousand, there's, there's fourteen units, so is that nine, about nine thousand, ten thousand dollars per person for water费. And if we have eight hundred and forty houses here...
Eight hundred and sixty.
Eight hundred and sixty. Just, if you think about that in terms of a water system, because I believe that water is the biggest issue here, even though that ten thousand dollars is a lot of money, but it is, if you, we, we have a huge liability for water for the whole city, all eight hundred and forty of them. And I, I've sat with the South Coast Water District when they're talking about the rate increase of, was that a hundred dollars, a hundred, the house, the South Coast Water District, what do they pay per, per place is about a hundred dollars now, a hundred and thirty dollars? I thought you knew that.
Yeah, we, it just went up. No, no, I don't pay the bill, I just use the water.
Yeah.
The owner pays the bill.
Yeah.
I think it's a hundred and twenty-nine.
So if you multiply that by twelve and then by ten years, where does that put you at? So... And, and so we really do need to solve this water problem. And this, this, I, I think, I don't know how long they've had a water system at Fur Acres, but this, this is a repair bill that they got, that they're doing and we're just guaranteeing that they're paying. And I was thinking that, that's nine thousand dollars. And they're getting some, we're getting some money from this from the government though, right?
All of it.
All of it. So we really, the mayor needs to have a platform now that he's going to be a mayor to work out a water sol, solution. That's all I say. And I, I just, I just want to point out that that's a huge cost and, and individual peoples with wells and things like that, I've heard ten thousand, I've heard fifteen thousand dollars for dry wells and things like that. And, and so this is a big deal.
It is a big deal.
So you've made a motion to approve this...
Yeah.
Recommendation, was there a second?
Yes.
Two of them.
Okay. Any voted?
Co-seconds.
Okay. Hold those in favor?
I have.
Any opposed? Okay, that's, and...
Okay, we've talked...
Thanks for the reg, Jamie, I didn't vote on that, I didn't, I didn't.
Oh, okay, thank you.
The next item is sale of Silco's dam and so...
Now, I already talked about that, so I don't have to do it twice. Because it was on my head.
On my head?
Yeah.
At our executive session? So now...
Well, there it is, see, I've got it all mixed up.
I've just got a couple duplicates. Okay, we understand you, don't worry.
Okay, thank you.
Reports. I think you've heard most of what I am concerned about and that's the, the damn problem that Dune City has. And it sounds like we need to get some more information to find out where we are and where we're going. I must have been reassuring at the special session because the audience is kind of thinned out since then.
Yes. Please have you agree.
And again, I just talked to a guy in charge of this thing yesterday and he still hadn't heard of anybody talking about removing the dam. So I think I'm going to be calling him tomorrow to find out when they're going to be opening the bids and what does that mean?
Yeah.
Who got it or when are we going to announce that or, or what? And then you can read about it in the Sayer's Law News.
Yeah.
Because the minute I find out anything, I'll call Jared. Or maybe Jared will call you.
Yeah. That's right.
Oh, that could happen.
Yeah.
Somebody wrote my phone number on a restroom wall somewhere.
Oh, Lord.
Duke?
Well, the community center is saying you've got a good person working for you here, taking care of the rounds and helping out around.
Right, yes.
Yeah, he seems like him. My only thing I can say in the future is I can't believe how good this roof is held up, up here. I go up there quite often and I can't believe how good it's held up and it's, it's still in good shape. There's a couple of tiles missing, but not leaking, but it's in really, really good shape for as old as it is. It's going to live on one day, but yeah.
He does a lot of work for me and I'm recommending him over here.
Oh, yeah.
So are you suggesting in future budget committee meetings, we need to allocate money for a possible roof?
I think about five years, it looks like about five years you'd be putting a roof on. By ten, maybe. It just amazed me how, I think by keeping a roof clean and kicking the needles off of it and not letting the moss start is a big deal.
He'll probably bring them back on council on that.
No.
Is water quality?
Okay. I had a meeting with four people from the state of Oregon. And it was a really good meeting. We probably could have talked for several more hours, they kept it to one hour though. We were able to give our point of view of what we wanted to do for water testing. And basically we want to continue doing the same tests we did before, that does the basic health of the system, except replacing the one test that used the three different chemicals with their new meter that they can give us and a meter will test it, we don't have to use all the chemicals. So I'm all for that. That will make things easier. But the main things we'll do are basically the same thing, test we had before except with that new test. They did say that they would rather we, most of the people that went out liked to do fair weather testing, when the weather was good, they would go out on the boat and collect water. They would like us to sample when it's not so nice outside. That might be difficult to get people to do that, but we'll see what, what happens with that.
Yesterday morning when I would not have done it, it was cold.
With the winds like they were this morning, I wasn't going out in the boat.
Wasn't too bad.
So they did say that there's grant opportunities and some other funding opportunities that we could look into. They would like us to do DNA testing again, that's about two thousand dollars, that was last time, who knows what it costs this time. So that's something I'll probably be asking to put in the budget in these coming years, is to do DNA testing again. But we talked about the issues we're having about the saltwater being high and the, they believe it was from the sandbar being blocked and other issues, but they, I was very happy with, as we talked and said things, I could see them writing down notes. So they might have been doodling, but I like to believe they were interested in what we had to say and were writing notes about it and were willing to help. So there's, I think we have some, four people that are willing to do what they can to help us out and so I was very happy with that. So we'll be writing a new, they don't call it Q A P P now, what's the name of the new file?
I can't remember.
Anyway, there's a, a new...
It's like the same thing as procedures manual.
Yeah, it's a procedures manual, but it'll be easier because they have all the procedures written on their system so we can reference theirs, we don't have to write a bar. So it should be easy to write a new manual and we have to get that done and get that out. So anyway, a lot of good information back and forth and they're willing to meet with us again, so I can't wait.
And road reports. I'm pleased to hear from Brent that the boom truck is functioning and he's started, he said he'll be back, he worked over at our house today and he, I can't remember, he said he'd be back with the city tomorrow or Monday. And he's been sick for the last week, but he's, I think, a treasure. And he's going to be going around all of the, all of our streets and trimming all the stuff that's hanging over and...
Excellent, excellent.
Yeah.
That's the main complaint, Westlake, because Westlake roads are a lot narrower than other places on Dune City and keeping those vegetation back is really important.
Yeah. I really like that he trimmed this little bush out here that you can actually see if anybody's coming.
Right.
So any other road reports? I, I did drive Parkway lot to Sealy when a, a people actually drive through and also I reported a abandoned car on Silco's Drive. So that's the...
A long way, about six hundred people.
Is it abandoned?
Well, I...
It was abandoned. It was also a blue truck at one time that was spray painted black.
I thought he said it was from abandoned.
Could have been.
And that's why it was blue. Are there going to be order?
Well, yes. I would like to say what a great pleasure it is to have worked Duke with you both for the past six years that I've been on the council. And I particularly want to say that despite the fact that we have some significant political differences, I find that we very often vote the same way on city issues because I think we both...
Good for the city.
I think it is and it's been a real pleasure.
I appreciate that, thank you.
And thank you for your service to the, to the city.
And my pleasure. Me, same thing. I'd like to thank all the citizens of Dune City for this opportunity that was given to me, that served for twelve years, it's been an amazing experience in my life, wouldn't change it for anything. Thank all the people I've served with, mayor, the multiple mayors, a couple of the past and I think about quite often. Matter of fact, time to say that Becky and Jamie are the reason I'm here today. I was on the road crew and I seen the work they were doing, what they were up against and I thought I could help and I ran and things have changed in Dune City. I like to think that it is a nice place to live now. And for a while, I don't, I didn't feel that it was, it was going the wrong direction, I thought, so I ran and, and that just shows people out there, get out and run, one person can make a difference and one people, one person always makes a difference. And it's been just a great experience to me. Last thing I'd like to say is, it's two things connected. The work that our staff does here, we set up here and we get these ordinances and resolutions and we do this and what do we got, what do we got? We always put it on staff to have all this stuff, hours, sometimes weeks, sometimes months of work to prepare this book here so that we can sit down here and make a judgment call because of the work that they do in there, like I said, for hours, weeks and months. And it just amazes me, the work that you've done, Jamie.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah. And it's, you're, I think you're still underpaid and I know that our staff is underpaid. My, my dream, the elephant in the room to me is Dune City to really be what all it can be is, we have to start and have a well-funded staff that can do the, all the work that we ask them to do. And I hope that you guys will work in that direction to, to see if we can make it better, the staff are taking care of well enough that people want to work here and will stay here instead of just being a proving ground in the training center to move people on. That's my thing, that's it. Thank, thank everybody so much for letting me have this opportunity. Thank you.
I, I, I saw, I've received a letter in the mail, I think it was my wife received the letter and it was signed by Sheldon Myers, Ph.D. And I, I know you're very proud of the Ph.D. and, but it's in gerontology, is that correct? In part. So... Adult education and, and counseling. Gerontology, as you all know, is the study of aging. And I'm seventy, have I caught up with your, how long did it take you to get your degree? And if I, now that I'm getting older, I'm studying it more, am I getting close or am I just at a master's level? It sounds like life experience can be a, a, a good learning tool. I was just, you know... Well, everyone knows with B S X.
Yeah.
And S X is just more...
I have several of them.
And the Ph.D. is just higher and deeper. That's, oh, and I, I, obviously I need to thank Duke, so... Ready?
I would also like to thank Duke for his service.
I appreciate it, thank you.
You will be surely missed. I can definitely feel the love that everybody's had for you here in this town. And that will continue despite you not being here.
You never know.
I, I encourage you to be here as much as possible. I do think you have a very valuable voice that needs to be, continue to be heard. I'd like to thank the people of Dune City for allowing me to join the city council and be voted in with confidence. be voted in with confidence to serve them.
I'd like to thank Duke, I know I talked to you before the meeting, but I think your voice and diversity to the city and we need that, so whether with you not on the council, I hope you're in the meetings at times and giving us the voice that we need to hear because it's very valuable to have that.
I appreciate that, thank you very much.
And I am also am very grateful to be voted in again and to have another chance to serve the people of Dune City and to hopefully make positive improvements on the water quality that we're providing here and get some testing going again. It's been a long three years without it.
And Duke, I'm gonna miss you too. I was given a brand-new T-shirt a couple of weeks ago that reminded me of you.
I don't wanna know. I know, I know you're, I don't, I don't wanna know.
Of course I talk to myself, sometimes I need an expert opinion. You've given the city a lot.
I appreciate it.
We're all better off because of you.
I appreciate that.
Can we still have you come over and do the barbecue?
No, remember, he's gonna be the tailgater.
Oh, yeah.
He's gonna get everything ready, of course, in the beginning.
Oh, I failed to mention this, if you guys would make sure you review this, it has got some mandates for the city to be prepared for in the future.
Wow.
And it has some things that affect us all individually too, but I'm not saying it's a bad thing or a good thing, but.
Effective since January first of this year.
So move the agenda. Do you second to the?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
So move.
So maybe you think if we asked Jimmy to put something about red Mustangs on, on the car, driving in the streets?
For the record, we've been adjourned.
Well, you probably literally say it, I tend, I've been telling a lot of my friends that I don't need parking, right?
Yeah.